Welcome to Powell Elementary School Board of Directors Meeting for February 26th. On the agenda, the opening is the Pledge of Allegiance for the 4th Grade Students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, Bonnie. Bonnie Strange and the 4th Grade Students.
Okay.
This is the annual service to St. Jude's.
We are here tonight to talk about our project with St. Jude Children's Research Hospital.
We had a class meeting in September, had and had a discussion of possible charities or ways to help people.
We picked St. Jude Children's Research Hospital.
Ms. Strange called the hospital and found a person to help us out. It was Donnie J. Anderson, Senior Administrative Assistant of the Child Life Program.
We started collecting money.
At another class meeting, Meadow had an idea that we could collect money while we were trick-or-treating, so we did.
We used a math class to sort, count, and wrap the money, and we had $100.
We researched Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa traditions, and then made various holiday cards for St. Jude patients, families, doctors, and staff.
We also made cheering posters for patients and their families that Donnie put up around the hospital.
We made a hello, get well, and a holiday greeting video, including us singing jingle bells for the patients and their families.
This is just one of the many emails from Donnie Anderson. "Hi, Ms. Strange. Thank you and Happy New Year to you and your students as well. I have received your video and have passed it along to other staff. What an adorable bunch of students you have. It is such a great thing you are doing with the students. Teaching them the value of giving is important. We are very fortunate that your class has chosen our organization and mission to be a part of. Thank you, Donnie Anderson."
We kept bringing in money from home, then we had $128. Here is a letter that Donnie wrote us. "Dear friends of St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, thank you so much for thinking of St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. It was a great day to see all of those wonderful Christmas cards you sent us, sent for us. These cards will bring smiles to many of the children's faces. Thank you for helping make that possible. Being diagnosed with a new illness and coming to the hospital can be stressful events for a family. Child life specialists work closely with children and teens to provide non-threatening, age-appropriate explanations and preparations. St. Jude Children's Research Hospital is internationally recognized for its research and treatment for children with cancer and other catastrophic diseases. St. Jude has treated children from 50 states and all around the world, serving as a trusted source of physicians and researchers. Again, thank you for being part of our mission. Sincerely, Donnie Anderson."
At our class meetings, we kept talking about other ideas to raising money to St. Jude. Maybe we will have a tag sale.
We sent huge Valentines created by the members of our class, like this one.
Then, we got this card from Donnie. "Thank you all so much for taking the time to send your video to the patients at St. Jude. The video and crash your class sent brought smiles to many of the children's faces. We thank you for helping make that possible and wanting to support our mission at St. Jude. Know your efforts do make a difference. Thank you, Donnie Anderson."
For the week before vacation, we visited and collected money from each classroom in the school and got about $67. Now we have $195.
In the spring, we want to find a special way to give the donations to the hospital. We told Donnie that we wanted to keep the total amount a secret until it's time to present it.
If anyone wants to donate to St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, they can get the money to our principal or teacher here at Powell Elementary. We would be very grateful.
We are really learning a lot from this project. It feels good to try to cheer up children who are ill and give as much money to the hospital that we can collect in one school year. We will keep working on it.
Thank you all for listening to us tonight.
That was a marvelous job. Congratulations to you two and to you representing your class. You did just a marvelous job. You know, you are right, you are putting smiles on children's faces who are sick, and you've made, you've made their days, I'm sure. When they get cards from you guys, I've been there, I've seen the children that are sick, and it really means a lot to know that someone else is reaching out and saying, "Hope you feel better." So, thank you and your class for doing a marvelous job.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. Under public comments, I would like to ask Mrs. DeRozia. She's come here tonight, she spoke to me a little bit about, we all know we need speakers in the auditorium. We have, I know a gentleman that would like to come and talk to our principal. I haven't gotten ahold of him yet. But Mrs. DeRozia has a gentleman also, so would you like to talk about that?
Well, I initially am here to request assistance in either fixing or either restoring or getting new equipment for the multipurpose room, which is used for physical education, the musical yearly, and for our concerts with our music teacher. So, we need to get a system that will serve all three of those purposes. And we have pieces of systems, some of which works and some of which doesn't. And we're in the process of investigating the best way, most efficient, most cost-effective way to replace the system so that it works the best for everybody. I have a name, you have a few names, and we're hoping to get together on that and come up with some way to please everybody so that it works the best for everyone.
It's something that's been needed for a long time, and it seems to get brought up at the floor meeting every year, which is going to be next week. And I'm sure someone in the community will say, "Where is your speaker system? You know, we can't hear you."
Excuse me. I thought a couple of weeks ago they had gotten a grant or something for about $100 or $200 for something towards the speaker system. Is there anything that we knew about?
No.
I saw, gee, I knew they got a grant, it was six or seven hundred dollars. And it was for
The town thing?
The town.
I have no knowledge of that.
I have no knowledge.
Okay, let me, let me check into that. I'll call Karen.
I know they said for the town meeting, but I mean, why can't we combine together?
Well, that is something what you're asking for, isn't that, doesn't that tie in with us, with what we need?
I would think so, yes, because the gym has been used for bigger meetings with the town before as well.
If you could get the gentleman's name and Ashley, if you could give
I have an email out to him as we speak, hoping to hear back from him.
Thank you.
He has serviced other schools, so we'll see, so we can come up with
That's great. I think we should work on that. Something our school really needs. Thank you very much for bringing that.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mrs. Strange. That was
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Can we be totally with the gentleman's name? Okay, under, next one. No other public comment. Action items. The treasurer's report for January was enclosed. Is there any comments on that, questions? Or the, there was no budget or transfers. The consent agenda? Need a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Is there any questions on it? Hearing none?
Is that what we're going on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Just under minutes, mentioned overtime for women named Judy and Bridgette, give her that name.
Is that present?
Yeah.
Handle take that somehow.
Yeah, I think so. Is there anything else?
I believe it's not.
Are there anything else under the consent agenda? That you're willing to submit anything that's
No.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, I'm the third one, so it's unanimous, it passes. Down to the principal's report.
What I wanted to do this evening is to take a look at the action plan and goals and steps that we've had in place, you know, for this school year. And I wanted to, like I said, we have a school improvement team that we meet just about once a month. And this last month, we took a look at the different action steps in the area of literacy and reading and as well as math, and on the backside, parent involvement and school-wide climate. And we went through each one of the action steps and, you know, we took a look at them in the sense of how well are we using these action steps and what do we need to do to tweak some of them. So, if you look at action step number one, under the area of literacy and reading, initially it said monthly grade level team meetings. Well, now here at Powell, we have PLC weekly meetings. And I think that's really made a difference for classroom title, specialists, and special ed. And this is a time where teachers get together and staff, they get together, they take a look at data, they take a look at their, you know, the common core, best practices, and what we need to do for individual students at times. So, rather than monthly grade level team meetings, they're really Powell PLC weekly meetings. And that's really made a difference within our school, I believe. On the second one there, it says to regroup children to provide additional intervention following major testing windows in September and January. And we do this on an ongoing basis, not just in September and January, but this, this is a continual process. So, if a team is meeting at a PLC during that weekly meeting, they may be regrouping children because of a common assessment that they give their students or taking a look at MAPS scores. So, it's not really just that September and January timeframe. We're, of course, continuing professional development. This latest session that we had in January, there was a great group of insertive sessions that teachers were able to sign up for and attend. It was, you know, really one of the best number of sessions that I've seen in a number of different districts that I've taught. So, professional development is ongoing. Let's see, as far as the reading ones, what more? Number eight, the tutors from the area colleges. We don't have this year, I know Marion Adalizia has worked with Williams College in the past, and she's tried to institute that again this year, and we've been unsuccessful. But, you know, that's something that we, that we may want to continue to strive for.
I wonder if instead of just Williams College, does the South West Vermont, does the Southern Vermont College do that?
They have in the past.
Yes, they have.
Uh, let's see here. And of course, we're going to continue the summer bookmobile for this next year. Under math, the first one there, the math lab for classes to be assigned to attend bi-weekly. And classes do go twice weekly. Classroom teachers, where it has on here that they will attend the lab with their classes, and classroom teachers are within their own classroom providing interventions for students while other students are in the lab at times. So, it's not like teachers are going into the lab at the same time as the students.
You know, I always felt that we were one step ahead of other buildings because we did have a math lab. I just don't understand why we would even be below when we have a math lab. I don't know, I couldn't make a good look at that. Doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I mean, we're below in, in, in reading and math as well as writing. We have made gains in, in writing, in the area of writing, especially in this last year. In writing, our 5th graders were at 46 percent, 46 percent advanced and proficient. And the prior year, don't think we were able to do the writing because of the, because of Irene.
Irene.
And the year before that, 20 percent. So, we've definitely made gains there. But we can always strive to make better gains in the area of reading and writing as well as math. But we do have the math lab.
And I think too Cindy and for those watching, and Bonnie can help here, but the curriculum teams, SUI in literacy, but more particularly in math, have been looking at materials in a pilot in different schools over the last two years. And really, I think this summer is the summer where we end up landing on some recommendations for our mathematics core materials. So, we're watching, I think it's called the Bridges and Singapore Math, and there's one other, I believe.
And Pat Conway has been here quite a bit this year, working within classrooms as well and working with students, and I think that's going to make and you have to realize that the tests that we, that the students, the kneecap tests were taken back in October. So, that's really efforts from the previous year and not really this year. It's not really indicative of what we've done so far this year.
I think the PLCs, you're right, will help as well for the communication and the consistency in the instructions.
On the backside, if we take a look at parental involvement and homeschool connection, like I said, at one of the previous board meetings, all of our teachers now have their websites up and going. We're doing a monthly newsletter out to parents, and that's on our website as well. So, and we want to continue communication there. The first one on there, to invite parents, community, and selectmen to Powell Proud Night, or Pride Night. And we want to expand that. We want, you know, we want them here for all family events and not just whatever that, we haven't had that this year, the Powell Pride Night. But we want them to be involved in all of our events and not just one specific event. Number three, to track parents' involvement in parent conferences. And I think we were at about 98 percent of our parents attending parent-teacher conferences this year.
That's good.
And I thought that, that was a great, great percentage.
Do you have a percentage? I don't know how many people use the website.
No, I don't. I don't know whether there's a
Do you think that people are?
Yeah, no, families do as far as taking a look at homework, spelling words. There are.
Do you think there's any parents that doesn't have a computer?
Well, we know that our students can take home their, their netbooks in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. Not that they have Wi-Fi at home, but they would have that capability of having their netbook to work on. But we do send home a hard copy to families of the newsletter as well. The third, or the fourth one, the school-wide climate, there were only four action steps here. But we, you know, we have a ton more under PBIS. The implementation of Tier 1, 2, and 3 of PBIS. We're going to continue the incentives of the pause, the golden pause, the blue tickets, the golden plungers that you all laughed at one of the board meetings as well. Our committee meets twice a month. Our coordinators, myself and Karen Thierret, we attend regional meetings. We're looking to attend the Best Summer Institute, participating in webinars and trainings. You know, continue the yearly rollout of the building expectations. This year, we had a parent information lead on PBIS. And of course, at the end of the year, we have PBIS surveys. And actually, this next March staff meeting, we're going to be doing a PBIS survey as well for our staff. So, I just wanted to kind of present some of the action steps tonight and where we are in the process and where we're going to get there. We are going to improve in the areas. It's, I know it takes time, but we're implementing a lot of new things and we're really, really working hard here in our building.
I like this. Under action, complete annual survey and bullying for students. A real person for pushing, for getting rid of bullying. I mean, it's got to be brought to the top. That's good.
Any other questions on that, on the area of
On the action steps, the reason number two, regroup children, provide additional intervention following major testing windows. For children not meeting the standards, I would be rather I was just curious, you do anything on that?
We do, and we do that continuously.
It follows both ways.
It is both ways. And teachers that are here can comment on that as well. It's not just that we're regrouping our students that are struggling. We have to take a look at those high students as well.
Some of the students will, for instance, to another class to have their math because they would be more challenged with another grade level. In my room, I have independent groups that move ahead because they're ready according to the testing results.
At school-wide. Excellent. Okay.
We can also comment on the fluency of the presentation of your students tonight, Bonnie. And your
Expression?
Not only, yeah, the expression and presentation skills, looking up at the camera, looking at the audience. Very, very impressive and all, all part of the literacy efforts.
Thank you. That was Caleb Green and McKeede Nice Martel, by the way. I apologize for not introducing them. But we practiced so many times, we'll just get up and go. I forgot.
They both did a marvelous job.
Thank you so much.
I recognize you. I know the family.
Oh, good.
Okay, chairs report. Update on Oak Hill Project. Okay, Mr. Richard, I want to share with you today that I got a phone call that the gentleman is trying to get a permit for a three-apartment, a sewer permit. I guess he's going to be told he has to wait till the buyer says. I was the woman, the director of the race water plant, called me, and I said, "Don't issue nothing yet."
Well, the good news, I mean, the good news, I think you saw in the last email that they finished their excavation of contaminated soil and sent up to the state. The gentleman had issued a, called a smack letter, site management, activity closed or something. I forget what smack stands for. Basically, it's a clean site. He's on vacation or something, won't be back for another week or two, so we got to sit around for him to get back. I think we're inching closer each day.
So, when it's finally, it's cleared up, it's clean, should we, should get the go-ahead soon?
That's the game plan. That's how I understand all the communications that have been flying around the last few days.
Were the stairs put back?
Well, the concrete ones were demolished and taken out because we had to clean underneath them. But the wooden ones were put back. That was all done with the buyer in observation and
Okay, but we don't have to be close to it. That's good.
So, I think it's good news heading in the right direction, we just, we just need to be patient.
We need to be patient. Well, not being considerate, we were supposed to sign last July, so we'll be patient. All right, well, I, the only thing I want to remind our board members is Monday night, we need to be at the school here for, I believe it's 7 o'clock.
Yep.
The school is the first to
Seven, much for
Before?
Seven.
Seven o'clock. Is it before?
Is it before?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe it is.
Friday's the first, seven.
Yes. We, we really don't, so skim off the time.
Friday's the fourth.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, so 7 o'clock at the school.
We'll put it on the board.
Okay, that'd be great, yes. And I wanted to ask you about the light. Is that going to be fixed on the side?
It will.
Okay, that's important.
Email today from Rich saying that when they came over, they didn't have something that they were willing to come back. And so, that'll be taken care of.
Okay, good.
I'll check with Rich anyway.
All right, that'd be good, because that's really important. A lot of our elderly citizens come, and it's, it's so hard if they have to be able to see to get down that, that kind of rain. Unfortunately, Gudrun is sick, so she couldn't make her last. She sent her apologies. She's right, though. We didn't want her to show up and share with us her sickness, but we did miss her. We missed you, Gudrun. Okay, so, I don't have anything else, so we'll move right on to our superintendent and our chief officer.
I'll just share with you, at tomorrow's BSU board meeting, we will be receiving a presentation by the school effectiveness coach that's been working with MAU and Monument, Marah Harp. Those are schools that are either in their first year or beyond the multiple-year mark for schools and improvement. But they do have indications for activities that have been happening here at Powell. They're very similar to the activities that have been happening here. And we'll also highlight two or three areas under the board goals initiatives or efforts that we're working on, SUI.
That was, that's at 7, right?
It's at 7 tomorrow at the middle school.
Mr. Everett, do you have anything else for us?
Just if there's any questions on the budget stat report. And then I just wanted to give you an update. If any of you have followed, I think it's H256 or 265 about setting the tax rates passed the House. And what, what they've done is a little differently than what we forecasted in the annual reports. It still needs to pass the Senate, signed by the governor, but all indications are it's going to have some smooth sailing. But they're talking about putting the base education spending per pupil at 91.51, which is higher than the 89.15 that we had budgeted. That's good news. It gives you more flexibility in your cost-per-pupil formula. The downside to that is they increased the base tax rate from 89 cents to 94 cents. I was forecasting 93 cents. The net result of both of those, because as I said, the base head spending is positive, the increase in the tax rate is negative. But the net result of both of those together, combined in the formula, will be a reduction in your forecasted tax rate from an 11 cent increase to a 9 cent increase. So, a little bit more.
We'll take whatever we can do.
That's right.
Is there anything else that we Nothing other? All right, well, this is
This is what the thing to use. I want to talk about that.
Yes, okay. Nothing other, you can't guess, that's a good one.
All right. I contacted
All right, uh, I contacted Red Cross, and they sent us a survey to, to literally fill out. And we have it here, and, uh, Mr. Phillips said, Mr. Valley, uh, has, uh, done the best they could on the survey. And there's some questions here that, uh, we, we left, uh, Mr. Phillips and I at the side or the board, who decide, but they are, it's, uh, on page two. So what happens next, we, we do what we can on the, uh, on the survey. And then we make an appointment with the contact of the Red Cross, and they'll come down here and see Mr. Phillips, Mr. Valley, and then they'll do the survey. And then after, if we're approved as a Red Cross site, then there's a contract that will have to be signed between the school and the, uh, and the Red Cross. Here's, I only have one copy. I sent the contract airway email, said what we did, the contract. On the, on the survey itself, though, we have to, uh, point of contact to authorize use of facility, point of contact to open facility, and ultimate point of contact. Does the board need to decide that or?
We can go to our office for a review.
Pardon?
When, go to our office for a review of the contract, the actual agreement.
Okay.
We'll just do a quick review.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's weeks down the road, but you're...
Yeah, it is.
I didn't get this.
Okay. I recently...
Because they'll come actually to do a tour, isn't that what you said? Jim, they'll come on site after you've done the survey.
Right.
So when the survey is completed as fast as we can.
Yes, right. And then they come for a, um, visit.
A physical, physical survey. So, uh, sometime in the next, uh, before we complete the survey, is these contacts. Any comments or thoughts on that, how we?
Well, I think, um, that was one of the questions that was, that was brought up when, um, we thought there was, there was a need to use the school. And again, that's why we brought the subject up. Who should be the authorized use, who authorizes it? I think, you know, we need to work together with our, our principal. As far as a pet shelter, the board, I think decides whether it's going to be a pet shelter, which to me, I don't see where we can do that. I don't know. I think we need to sit down with, uh, with Todd and go through some of this and add, you know. It, it just can't be, uh...
But what we have to work with, like, for rescue, if I want to replace them?
It, yeah, yeah, we have to have all, all of the players here. But as far as point of contact, alternate point of contact, I mean, uh, it could have been, um, at one point in time, Joel Howard, I believe, was the, uh, chief of police. He was involved, uh, back when, uh, Ms. Pausner was here. Because they had an emergency or something, and he was the one that came over.
I mean, Joel's still in the sheriff's department. He lives right across the street. I'm sure he would help because he's in the fire department as well.
Right, but I'm saying, we would have to invite him. We'd have to sit down with multiple players and just got, fill, to fill this thing out. So what you're saying, Jim, is this has to go up to the, uh...
Well, let me finish my, so the, the, as far as Todd and I see it, uh, the three points of contact need to be completed or approved by the board. The pet, pet shelter needs to be, uh, answered by the, if you're asking, we can use it for a pet shelter. I think we're all going to say no on that. Uh, and then there's some questions about the, uh, the kitchen and, uh, facility ownership. I'm not sure how we answer that. But there's some questions on here, that's...
School, is it? Yeah, that's true, yeah.
The part, the part on the form needs to be continued. Got it for that.
Okay, I, yeah, I would like that. That would be another question that was, that was brought up. I'm not sure how the other schools do it, but if the building had to be used for an emergency, I would imagine, number one, the town would be involved. The town would have to be, um, as far as, um, who's cooking? Who's going to cook? If you get a hundred people in here, you know, you need to feed them. I'm not sure.
The Red, the Red Cross, um, once you enter into this agreement, the Red Cross is in control. They'll bring in, they'll bring in their cooks, they'll bring in their food, they'll bring in their staff, and they just do it. And very quick chance, I've had to look at this, um, page three, limitations of use facility. All our other facilities, it's, uh, the limitation is if schools operate, we can't use it. Uh, very few cases where there's going to be an emergency where the school, um...
Is in session.
Is, is in session, but in that rare occasion, and actually, the Red Cross has actually recommended that that's what we said, is you can only use this when school's not in session. It's on page seven, under limitations of facility use. Right now, you've got checked, the facility will be available any time during the year.
Page three.
Our, our limitations has typically been when schools in session is being used.
Yeah.
And that's basically what I had told you.
And I think Jim and I, um, we took a look at this and filled in what we could. Tonight, we wanted to give it to the board, take it back, um, look at some suggestions that you all have and bring it back to us. And we can, we can fill in some of the missing pieces or, um, any questions. But I think it's a...
Well, just so you know, the middle school is, boards pets.
When they can get crates and, yeah.
It's cumbersome, but I don't know why that ended up being the case. But they, they do allow pets to be, I guess that must have, that might have been a restriction with that new January, McKee.
Yeah, it could have been. Well, it was also that, um, several of the elderly people will have a pet that they'll bring with them to the shelter. And then it becomes difficult to figure out the transportation and what do you do with the pet?
You're actually right, because we found that people wouldn't, even if they were, um, in a disaster area, they wouldn't leave their home if they had to leave their pet behind, so, um...
We had many during Irene show up at the, um, middle school. So I think, just for clarification for those watching, when we say that the school can be used when school is not in session, it doesn't mean weekends or, um, vacations. What it means is during an emergency, it's likely that the school would be closed. So in the case of Irene, the, the districts were all closed, I think it was a week. And the middle school was used for, what, three days, I think, or four?
Right, and the, and the part, and the reason for that is if there, if there's a limited issue here in town that, you know, three forty-six got flooded out or something, um, that you were still operating, and they needed someplace to put people.
We had the firehouse.
They may still want to have that conversation, but you, you don't want them to have the ability to come and say, oh, by the way, Todd, we're, we're taking over, we're shutting your school down, whether you like it or not, we're going to take it over.
Or we're going to use the cafeteria, please make other arrangements, or something like that, you know, you have to think about it.
So I, the sense that I'm getting is, trying to go forward on this, is that Todd's focal point on this, I'm your, I'll be your worker.
We work together.
Okay, and then, uh, we'll get this thing completed, that's for sure. And the, the board members can take a look at it and, uh...
Yeah, I just asked that we, we are able to, whatever you decide to write in it, you know, I think we need to look at it before you send it forward.
Okay, well, it's not go forward roughly, fill the, the, the Red Cross said, just do the best you can, okay? And then, uh, as far as the, you got to measure the toilets, how high the toilets were, it was strange stuff in here. And that's all been done. Then the rest, the Red Cross will come down and actually say if we, if we're capable of being a shelter. There's, there's a toilet problem in that, uh, we only recognized, uh, two toilets for the public to use as a shelter. And reading the detail of Red Cross, that's, it's twenty-five people per toilet. So that would cut us off at, at fifty, and somewhere in here, we said, we're looking to house two hundred. So there are, there's a lot, there's going to be a lot of give and take. We're a long way from signing a contract. I think, uh, uh, Todd and Mr. Valley have done a, as best a job as possible physically describing the facility. And now the Red Cross will come in, and, uh, the points that are still open, uh, I think can be, uh, you know, contacts and things like that can be, after the Red Cross does a survey. No sense to go through all that work if they're objective, so I think that's a possibility.
Yeah, I'd have to project us, but yeah, when the time comes, we need to sit down with different players. And we'll, uh, we'll invite the, uh, the emergency manager of our town, or invite the fire chiefs of different areas. Yeah, it looks good. You got a lot of, uh...
Should we go forward then and make the appointment?
Cindy, I'm having trouble hearing, um, I just wanted to make sure I heard what you said. So you're, you're thinking that you would want to meet with the fire and police before this is, um, given over for, because I think what your point was, I'm just repeating so that we can hear it on the, the TV as well. I think your point was that the Red Cross would come in on, on what we could fill out in order to see whether it's worthwhile continuing.
It's a viable facility.
A viable facility. Is that what you're talking about?
So, yeah, and after that is, happens, then we can sit down before we sign anything and...
With the police involved, and, okay, yeah. Thank you. I just, I didn't, if I couldn't hear, I wasn't sure we were being picked up on the TV.
And before we, we send this out, I think board members should take a look at this, bring it back to us next month with revisions and changes. And then from that, we would send it in. And that's...
Yeah, we have time.
Okay, the, the next step is make the appointment. Should we make that after next board meeting?
Yeah, I would. I would, I would have everyone take a look at this, bring it back to us next month for revisions and changes. And we can do that, and then send it in after that.
Because, uh, next month, after election, you know, we, we may have new board members.
And just, uh, clarification, there's questions on here for, for the fire department. I did send that to Joel. I haven't gotten it back yet, but he's not, but he answered the fire department question.
Okay, good, good. So if you could email, um...
The contract.
The contract to, uh, Rick and email one to me. I appreciate it. Yeah, that's even better. All right. Can we keep these?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Take those and make revisions and changes and...
I could, yeah, I was going to say, it's a lot of material to hear in a store that the last time you heard. No, it's good. You did a good job. All right, here, but here's your...
I'll see you later.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, is there, uh, any other business to come before the board? Being none, I guess, let's retain a motion.
Make a motion, you're done.
Second.
All right, let's make second. All right, and see you two tomorrow night.